Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the August 14th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll ask everyone to rise as we say the pledge to the flag. And gentlemen, if you could remove your caps.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're missing a few faces tonight. Our chairman, Mr. Koutzeradis, and Ms. Bowman are off tonight. Our zoning officer, Mike Italia, will be attending via Zoom. And we have a special visit from one of our solicitors, Tracy Hunt, seated to my right. He will be addressing some litigation that we were involved in in the last 30 days. We have a packed agenda for the night, so we're going to try to move on as quickly as we can. We did meet at 6:00 PM for executive session. We discussed some potential performance agreement with Earl Paving Contractors, and that will be discussed later on. It's noted in your agenda. At 6:30, we had a public works session. We discussed the sewer fund involving the Philadelphia Water Authority. We discussed our MS4 water pollution reduction plan for Lower Southampton. We discussed some township financials year-to-date. We had our department heads discuss our parks and rec, our public works, and our chief of police discuss some things that occurred about town. Our next item that we are going to be talking about will be the -- our newest police officer to the force. But before we do that, I want to pause for a moment and make some comments. Taking an oath tonight will be our next homegrown police officer. An oath is a solemn promise, often invoking God as a witness and placing your hand on a Bible. This will be done before parents, family, the board of supervisors, the residents, and friends alike. I cannot stress enough to you, Ms. Roganitz, the importance of your occupation and your oath. It was only a few years ago, or so it seems, actually 39 years ago, in 1985 that a young police officer in a town similar to ours stood before his parents and his board, his family, and a district magistrate. And he took a solemn oath, just as you will tonight. This young officer completed the Pennsylvania State Police Municipal Training, achieving the honor of class president, very prestigious for a small group of officers. He embarked on a career that included many highlights and sadly many sleepless days and sleepless nights. Sadly, that goes with the territory. A patrolman to start, his desire was to be the best police officer, which led him to the position of detective five years into the job. A detective's job is to put together the pieces of a puzzle of a crime scene that's left behind. And this is what that detective did well. He excelled in the area of homicide investigations, robberies, felonious assaults, child abuse, and the drug epidemic that took so many of our family members. This detective was involved in some of the biggest drug and asset seizures in Bucks County's history. He was a sworn Bucks County detective. He was a sworn DEA agent and a Homeland Security agent. He was awarded numerous medals and awards for service, valor, and heroism, both nationally and internationally. Sadly, one day in the course of his undercover work, he sustained career-ending injuries. And sadly, that goes with the territory. Left with a debilitating injury, he was unable to continue to serve as a detective. But this detective took an oath to his community, and he was not done. Seeking to use his talents and his skills and his training, he pursued another calling. Serving as a mentor and a community leader, this detective became the magisterial district judge for the community. Having earned his Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice, graduating with honors, he was eager to excel. Further studies included Westchester University towards his master's degree. He also studied at University of Phoenix and Temple University Beasley School of Law. Rising to the top, which happens through hard work, Judge Baronowski was a leading proponent and leader in the Bucks County Drug Court. Judge Daniel Baronowski became the president of the Bucks County Magisterial District Judges. There's 25 judges in Bucks County. Later, he became the president of all 515 magisterial district judges in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. In 2020, Judge Baronowski was appointed by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court to serve on the Court of Judicial Discipline. And just this past July, Judge Baronowski was elected to serve as the president judge of judicial discipline. Judge Baronowski has been our district judge in Lower Southampton since 2017, serving the residents with honor and integrity. His wife Kathy and two daughters, Jessica, who's here tonight, and Julie, are proud of their hero. They reside in a little town called Langhorne. And it all started with an oath 39 years ago. And now, I'm going to ask everyone to please rise as we call Judge Daniel Baronowski into the room.
That's the nicest introduction I've ever received. You can leave the dollars. Yeah. It might take more than a few dollars. I would like to thank the residents of Lower Southampton for their confidence and their support in the position. In order to have law and order, we need a fair and independent judiciary. So I would thank the residents of Lower Southampton for having that faith in me and in the office. So, and I'd like to thank the board of supervisors for their support also. So thank you very much. All right, and my office is located in Pendell, 142 Center Street. So if we can ever be assistance to you or your families, you have an issue, feel free to stop into the court. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. At this time --
Well, you said I only had 30 seconds. So I'm there.
At this time, I'll call on Chief Ted Crimell to make a presentation.
Hi, today we're going to introduce Jessica Roganitz. She's a lifelong resident of the township. She went to Lower Southhampton Elementary School for questions year high and graduated from the Chavity in 2017. She -- sorry. She then graduated from Penn State University for Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice in 2024. And then she attended the Montgomery County Police Academy. I believe her parents, Christine and Chris, are here, and Brother Sean. And we're happy to have you aboard.
Thank you, chief. Now, is there a board member that'll make a motion?
I'll make the motion to appoint Jessica Roganitz to the Lower Southampton Township Police Department effective August 14th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, hearing, no questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, three to zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Roganitz. And Judge, please do the honor.
You'd like somebody from your family to come up and hold the Bible for you? You're drafted, all right? Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Officer Roganitz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support Roganitz.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And this governmental subdivision.
And this governmental subdivision.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
Enforce the law.
Enforce the law.
And discharge the duties of my office.
And discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicapper disability.
Handicapper disability.
As a police officer for Lower Southampton Township.
As a police officer for Lower Southampton Township.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Baronowski. We're going to take a five-minute recess so the family can take some photographs. No comment? You may address the board. You have three minutes for comments. Any item that's going to be on the agenda tonight, you can hold off your comments until that agenda item comes up so we're not speaking on multiple things a second time. If you do come up, there's a sign and sheet here. You don't have to announce your street, but sign your name and your address for our records. And the microphone's yours. First person up, just turn the microphone around. And sir, you can come on up first.
Three-minute rule.
There's a three-minute rule.
Okay. I've got three items that I'd like to address. I have three items that I would like to address. Your Public Works Director knows of the three items. He was there and seen the problem. You have a right-of-way that's beyond my property. It's got three right-of-ways in it. You have a sewer right-of-way, the electric right-of-way, and the stream right-of-way for the progressing creek. The trees are now growing up into the wires. The secondaries are completely covered. You've got one tree that's almost up to the primaries. You've got to get in there and clean those trees out. Now, he's aware of what was in there. And I want to make sure that you people know about it so it doesn't fall by the wayside. Because about the middle of the winter, when the secondaries go, you've got 12 properties that have an electric. That's number one. Number two, Center Road and those wood. You've got big rocks in the shoulder of the road. And that's an O-N-O. The shoulder was split there for vehicle and pedestrian traffic. These big rocks are within a foot of the car way. It states definitely in the ordinance what you can put there and what you can't. Those are in violation of it. I asked zoning to take care of it in November. Nothing's happened. So if you would, please address that. And it's kind of ironic because the township pays a lot of money to put stuff. They've got a sign, a road sign, traffic sign. And the sign's split there, it has a breakaway. The fire hydrants have breakaways. This particular sign has a big boulder up against it if a car hits it. The sand ain't going to get hurt, but the car's going to get destroyed. These rocks are huge. And the way people ride up through there, we live on a large old street. And no sidewalks, no curbs. We just live in it. So that's basically why I'm here tonight. I don't want the thing to fall through the cracks. And as I said, zoning knows about the rocks. The Public Works Director knows about the right-of-way. And he also knows about the one in the middle of Brooklyn, which is a disgrace. So take it up with him and do what's appropriate.
Very well. I thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up? Mr. Stevens?
Stevens, 345 East Merrill Avenue. I keep coming here asking to alleviate my ignorance. I am ignorant. And Mr. Dillon has accused me of slander, but that's because I'm speaking from a position of ignorance. I don't know why the actions of a zoning officer became national secrets. I feel like Eric Snowden. What do I -- why can't we just have a conversation with Mr. Italia and let me go away? Mr. Dillon, sir, when you viewed the police footage, what did the officer say?
I'm not here to answer your question.
I'm just curious.
I haven't seen any police footage.
You haven't looked at it? How could you possibly accuse me of slander when you haven't given your -- I come here trying to get answers. You've got answers at your beck and call, refused to look at them, and then accused me of slander? Are you kidding me? Does anybody not see how ridiculous this is? He's accusing me of slander and he hasn't looked at the freaking evidence? How could you possibly, sir? How could you possibly? You're the one who told the rest of the board, "Don't look at the footage," right? You're the one who suggested to the board, "Turn it from three minutes, five minutes to three minutes so Glenn Stevens can't speak." You're the one who told Mike Italia to plead no comment, basically pleading the Fifth and not answering my questions. Because it's a national security issue if we find out what was on the -- what made Mr. Italia make the decisions that he did. Well, how is this a national security issue? I can't believe you accuse me of slander when you're ignorant. You're as ignorant as I am. The difference is, sir, I'm trying to fix my ignorance. You are burying your head in the sand like an ostrich. You're reveling in your ignorance. And you're trying to get the rest of the board to be ignorant with you. What the heck is wrong with you, sir? How could you possibly accuse me of something that you could find out for sure?
Mr. Stevens.
No answer to that?
Mr. Stevens. We've talked about this a number of times. I know you don't agree with my position. I've talked to the chief. I've talked to Mr. Italia. I've talked to the solicitor.
Why can't I talk to Mr. Italia, sir?
Talked to the manager.
Why can't I talk to Mr. Italia?
You can -- I understand you already had conversations with him in the beginning.
He lied.
Right? You've never spoken to Mr. Italia.
I had a phone conversation with him.
Right.
During that phone conversation, he refused to give me a temporary stay of execution or a temporary cease and desist.
Right.
Because this fence that was down for six months had to be put in on Monday.
Right.
Had to. He also --
Stevens, I'd like you to finish what your statement is, but your time is up.
Thank you very much. Of course, I just lost my train of thought. He told me that he looked at them on Friday before it was destroyed on Monday. One of my first questions for Mr. Italia is going to be, when did he first become aware that this was a contested fence and a contested property line? Not a date. I would like to know how many weeks or how many months before this happened. Because I could bring a witness who will tell you she was fighting this property line for weeks prior to this.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, your time is up.
Look quickly, what do you do when something's contested that you're dealing with? What you do is you dot your i's and you cross your t's.
So you got the survey done.
So what Mike Italia should do --
No, 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 no. No, you just --
Why would I get a survey done?
Okay.
I didn't have a fence put in.
Right. But you're claiming it's on your property.
I didn't claim that. I don't know why he didn't --
You told me that they destroyed part of --
Destroying my property and my possessions, yeah.
Something that you did, that you claim is your real property.
Yes.
Okay, so the remedy was, in this law country, you know, you were here for the swearing-in. Judge spoke about laws, based upon laws. You have a grievance. You have not been able to get your grievance satisfied through this forum. The only --
Well, because you won't answer his questions.
The only other forum available for you is you can continue to come here every week and -- or every other week and --
Why won't you just let him answer questions, though?
It's not my job to tell him to answer questions.
Your time is up.
Why won't you let him?
I'm not preventing him from doing anything.
Time is up. Is there anyone else?
I believe it was Mr. Dillon's suggestion that he plead the Fifth.
Mr. Stevens, your time is up. Is there anyone else here that would like to make any comments?
Pleading the Fifth never filled anybody with confidence.
Is there anyone else?
When someone pleads the Fifth, you think that guy's guilty.
Okay.
So I think he's guilty.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
You can tell him what you want. And we'll do this twice a month if we have enough agenda items.
Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda for tonight. We will be voting on the approval of minutes from July 10th, 2024. The approval of accounts payable, August 14th, 2024. Approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, August 14th, 2024. Ratification of accounts payable, July 26th, 2024. And ratification of certain reoccurring monthly bills, July 26th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. --
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three-zero. Our next item on the agenda is a conditional use hearing for Merrick Automobile, 1641 Loretta Avenue. Mr. Dillon, can you address that?
Yes, I've -- there's a request for a continuance by attorney Brandon Wynn that this matter be continued until the September meeting. And I also ask that he waive any time restrictions under the MPC, which in fact he did. So I would appreciate a motion to continue this matter to the first meeting in September.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three-zero. Item number three on the agenda, preliminary final land development for SEBA Cable, 235 Andrews Road, Feasterville, Trivers. This hearing will be conducted by our solicitor, Mr. Frank Dillon.
Please approach. You don't need it for a point.
Either one.
Either one. You can sit down there, that works fine. Can you please identify yourself?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ronald Jackson. I'm with Wilkins and Apex, the engineer for the property along with me.
I'm Sebastian Berlabuen de Rondeiro Sibakeva.
And gentlemen, you both swear affirming to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
I do.
Could you briefly explain this project to the board?
The project is located at 235 Andrews Road. If you're familiar with Andrews Road, it is an industrial district, little lane that circles around and has various properties off to the side. One of those properties was a stormwater basin that, in the original subdivision, was slated for development in the future should somebody choose to and maintain the stormwater design for the site. That is what the applicant chose to do. Over here, you see the image of the current property and the area, as well as the existing features plan. I'm going to flip it over and show you the development.
Why don't you take the microphone? If you need to, you can point things out.
So the applicant is proposing a warehouse structure here. Andrews Road's up front here. The residential property is in the back, commercial on either side. This one is actually a smaller stormwater basin to the side of that one. There is -- I apologize, this is the only plan I have with me that shows the layout. There's a lot of vegetation on there right now. Clearly, a lot of that will come down. However, there are plans to provide a whole bunch of additional vegetation. The property will be fenced around the entire perimeter in the back. There's limited parking simply for the needs of the applicant. Stormwater management will be maintained. We're -- because of the nature of the fact that the whole thing was a basin, you can imagine our stormwater will be significant. We're actually using what is called a storm trap system. That is the -- if you've seen these -- what is called a storm trap system. That is the... If you've seen these in your experience, the giant concrete vaulted structures that are underground and store water. It has us... It allows us to maintain the same volume of storage underground because it is so vast and so tall. I mean, we're talking about elevations of six to eight feet underground, as well as using concrete. It's incredibly stable, so we were not expecting any kind of issue with the truckloads or whatever we're driving on top of that that we're going to experience. So this is the project in a nutshell. We have been through two years approximately of presenting to the planning commission and your attachment engineer, trying to dot all the i's and cross all the t's to give you a wonderful project. I know that this particular site has experienced some concerns from residents in the past. We believe that what we're providing here gives you a much more desirable use of the property than is existing right now. And again, we've met all of the obligations we have, say for a few areas... or waivers, excuse me, that we are seeking and they are outlined in the resolution in front of you. So in a nutshell, that is our project. I welcome any questions you might have.
Board members, have any questions?
I personally have walked the property, and over the years, it was... There's homeless encampments back there, so it really needs to be cleaned up. So I'm hoping it'll look better than it is now. What were the waivers, Mr. Dillon?
They're set forth in the resolution, which you've had a chance to review. And if you want, I can go down each and every one of them.
Now, I think there was just one... We discussed the sidewalk waivers in the future, if there is sidewalks put in.
Yes, they've agreed all the terms. There's a review letter issued by the engineer. I prepared a resolution. There's one correction on page two, section B 3A. The letter changes from B to F. Other than that, it's acceptable to the applicant, but we need to see if there's anyone here from the public that wants to comment on this project.
Mr. Dillon, can we have Mr. Everett explain the new storm drain, the basin he's talking about, and compare it to what they propose to put in, if it's going to be beneficial or not?
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. So the structure they're proposing is concrete vaults that will be buried in the basin now. They are proposing some infiltration at the bottom. The volume that's provided is at or more than is existing now. Stormwater should be reduced at the point of discharge based on the calculations provided by the applicant and the stormwater management ordinance from the township. So essentially, the water stored in the basin now will not be seen by any residents or any people that are able to observe it.
So the existing... The proposed system exceeds the current?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Everett, is there a proposed... In the calculations, is there an overage built in, just in case? Yeah, we always talk about the 100-year rain, you know, or flood or whatever.
Yeah, so you're only required to design up to the 100-year storm, but there is a requirement in stormwater management that you have to have a reduction. So it's to 75%. So you're going from 100% release to 75%. So that's a built-in buffer.
Thank you, Mr. Everett.
Yeah, so as part of the waivers, they're asking for three deferrals. Actually, two deferrals. One's for curbing and then one for road widening. So that will be located on the record plan that if in the future the township wants to have the applicant install curbing or prepare road widening and sidewalk, that the township may ask the applicant to do that at some time in the future. The other waiver that's requested is of not providing replacement trees for the trees that are included currently in the basin. That's roughly scrub brush. And so the applicant's asking for a waiver of replacing that vegetation.
But they do have a reviewed landscaping plan. They have a landscaping plan with new plannings?
It's planted as much as possible to preserve the integrity of the proposed planning.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there anyone from the audience who wants to speak on this matter?
Sir, can you state your name and your address or write something down there?
You don't have to sign. Which... Okay, I'm sorry.
For a record.
On the rules.
If you could stand on one leg.
And hold your left hand up.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. How you doing? My name is Paul Jesper. So I will be affected by the residential side of the plans.
Where would you reside?
My property is 425 Summers, and it is directly the fence line of where all this is going to change.
Could you just take a moment and point it out?
So we are... We are talking about this-
Okay, you're in that area. Okay, all right.
So Summers is here. Jersey's here. This is the den in.
Is that your backyard then, or your front?
This is my backyard.
Backyard, okay. Thank you.
Zoning meeting was interesting. I think we got a lot of things out in the open because this is a five-year, seemed like a development that we got on for 2017. Now we're at finalized plans. So I wanted to just say, we have, at least me and my wife, we're not going to be upset about the development of the property, but I do have some issues with the rain runoff system going into... Because right now, it runs behind my house. It goes into the drain, goes into the, you know-
Swamp.
The swamp. It's a natural exit into, you know, the vegetation. Once he captures-
From your property.
From the property. Once he puts in the asphalt for the parking and once he puts in the capture system for, you know, for the rain runoff, I'm concerned about what changes to the property is going to come back my way. You know, according to the elevation, it's going to be even to our property. So that's my only concern. Because right now it drops down and it goes, you know, about 10, 15 feet, you know, into the valley, as I say. So my concern is what's going to happen in the future because there's a second retention basin next door to this that is also for sale. And once that gets developed, I'm going to have two brand-new, you know, sewer systems behind my house. And, you know, I wonder how that's going to tie into the future. Nobody could say that at the zoning meeting because that's not yet.
So the engineers can answer... I suspect answer the question, but if they in fact put more water in, you do have rights, but that's why this is designed by this gentleman and reviewed by Mr. Everett. So, but, you know-
He's going to capture it, but how much... If we have a three-day rain, is his system going to keep up with all of that into the... into the basin that he's going to develop?
So there's a couple of things there that you spoke to. This property for SEBA was built in the 1970s. As part of that, the land development, it was written that this parcel could be developed in the future as long as stormwater management was controlled. The parcel next to it for the Bell or AT&amp;T now, that's not going to be developed. That is... That's part of their land development, that they got approved after the '70s. So that basin, unless they come in and want to do something different, it's going to go through the same process that is here. I don't see that happening, but it would be the same process. The... They're not changing the elevations of the existing berm that's out there, so they're just filling in on the inside.
Okay.
So there should be no additional runoff that's directed towards your property. Everything's directed to the basin, and the grading, like from 10 feet from your property line is not changing. All right, so those elevations are going to stay the same. It's just going to be filled in where the hole is.
Are we losing the trees that are on that?
Some... The crabapple trees are to remain. Some of those trees are to remain. The healthy trees that are native are to remain. They're going to be supplemented with additional required landscaping as part of the land development. But we looked at it. We tried to get as much vegetation as possible along that buffer. Like I indicated before the waivers, I had a landscape architect look at it as well, that we're trying to... We're trying... They're trying to propose as many landscaping portions of this without overkill and killing them in three years. So it might take a couple of years for it to look good, but it's better than having these plants kill themselves because they're so close to each other. The basin actually discharges now to an underground pipe that goes to the downstream property that... of the new subdivision. So we're not changing that at all. It's still going to that pipe.
Mr. Everett, if I could, the one thing I do want to remind the board about is, as Mr. Everett said, this property was designed in the '70s. And everybody here being familiar with land development, you know, the only thing the '70s basins did was deal with rate of runoff. That's all it did. And we are bound by the newest regulations that exist, so we are infiltrating the first... the two-year volume. So you're actually going to be experiencing less runoff because we're letting additional volume of water soak into the ground that this existing basin is incapable of doing.
And just if it eases your concerns, I'm looking at the landscaping plan, and those crabapples are designated to stay there.
So let's-
And then there's new plannings. And it looks like they're doing their due diligence to keep the feel of the area.
The problem I had was that it's overgrown with vegetation.
Oh, yeah.
There's a gate that's open and accessible to whoever wants to walk into the area. We had a lot of problems at that one little corner at the dead end there. People like to park there. I know that the plans don't address it, but the curb line stops right there on Jersey. If we could figure out a way of at least, you know, making that on the residential side, a curb so people can walk from the grass area, eliminate the parking that's going on in that little... that space, which would be my only concern. And I understand he couldn't do anything because of development process, but I can't wait two years for the vegetation on the fence and everything else. It's overgrown. I got poison ivy. I got, you know, sticker bushes, you know, between my kid and my dog. It's like everything is coming on to my side of the property that, you know, I'm trying to get my landscaper to maintain it, but hopefully in the near future, he has access to the property to maintain and cut out the vegetation and the brush and make it look a little bit more presentable.
Well, you can always come back to us and let us know when we know who's-
Well, that's the only thing I...
Who could put on the fire.
Supposedly, I had to make a complaint about it because that's-
Obviously, until the approvals are received, we can't touch it. And especially, Mr. Everett can attest to this, our hands are bound primarily by the conservation district. We really can't touch that property until he's ready to go full board. Just the nature of the land development process.
Yeah, but you're taking down the existing fencing nets.
Correct.
Putting up old fencing.
You're getting brand-new fencing all the way back.
Right now, it's overgrown with-
Right, well, we're hoping this is going to be an improvement, a good improvement.
I can't wait for two years for him to figure out what he's going to give people.
Well, I mean, right.
Because it's getting worse and, you know.
Yeah, they're trying to move it as fast as they can move it.
It's my biggest problem. So there we are.
We understand. Thank you, sir.
So anyone else to speak on this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you tell us your name?
Steve Colanti. I'm on the north side of the property, the proposed building. I have nothing against the property being developed. I think it's a good thing. I'm just concerned about the stormwater drainage to the detention basin, which has been overgrown and not maintained for the past 20 years. I showed John a video, the last meeting I was here, how the water just ponds in the backyards. There's a small berm there, and it just doesn't seem to flow properly to the basin because the basin's not maintained. There is an easement between... on Jersey Avenue between two of the homes to get back there to maintain that property. And there was an HOA formed on the homes on Saxon Way. Saxon Meadows, Saxon Way. There was a homeowners association formed there to maintain that basin, and it's never been maintained. Maybe for two years, and then that was the end of it.
Okay.
That's my major concern, that there's no... There's... What they're proposing to do with the underground concrete holding tanks and to maintain the flow, that sounds all well and good. But without cleaning the basin and the way to the basin, the way the water's going to run, that's my major concern.
Mr. Italia, did you hear Mr. Colanti's comments about that storm? Is that something you can look at in the next 30 days and...
Can't hear him.
Can't hear him.
Okay, we cannot hear what you're saying, Michael. The volume is just low.
Well, I think he's saying John and he can look at it.
So I want to... I'd like to add something to this. The basin that this gentleman's talking about is actually the next basin down. It's not the basin that's on this property.
It's not this property.
Yeah, the drainage that he's indicating is actually off the property. So that'll be a discussion that me and Michael will have to have with the downstream property owner.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else is... Yeah, hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Ryan Butler. I live on the corner of Jersey and Summers. So the stormwater affects me less, or not really, not at all. I'm more worried about your landscaping and stuff. So I'm just curious, like, how many of the existing trees are we going to keep that are already built? Or is it like brush, it's like actual trees? Are they going to get rid of them if it's not near the property or?
From my understanding, that, you know, trees that are native to PA and that are well-established, they're going to keep along that property buffer.
Okay.
And then they're going to supplement it with additional landscaping. So there'll be trees and, like flowering trees and stuff like that.
Yeah. What kind of trees do you agree?
The design engineer can speak to that a little better.
I mean, if you look on typical maple, honey locust, standard trees in this region, but I mean, something to be aware of, if you're a resident surrounding this property, what you're going to see is the fence primarily. Certainly, the trees will exceed the fence height eventually, and you'll see the tops of the trees, but you really won't see the property anymore because of the privacy fence that's going to be installed. And so I'm not sure to what degree you're looking for information about vegetation, other than we're planting as many trees as we can.
Yeah. And what about the fence? Like, does the whole chain link fence alone there is going to come down, and we'll have a new fence?
Yes.
What kind of fence exactly? Another... A new chain link fence?
Yes, yes, yes. It's going to be like... This one, I can use it because a lot of tree over there, you see the trees down there?
Yeah. All right, that's pretty much it. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
I think the gentleman wants to ask another question.
One follow-up. Go ahead.
One follow. At the zoning, we were talking about a stockade solid fence.
Speak into the microphone, please.
I apologize. So the last meeting, we were doing a stockade solid fence along the residential side. Are you changing that to a chain link eighth of fence?
Was it the zoning hearing board plan?
It was the planning commission.
Planning question.
And there is a solid fence along the back from where the basin is to those residential, not along... not along where Jersey is.
I'm lost because...
That's from what... I don't have the plans in front of me. That's from what, I don't have the plans in front of me.
According to the plans, it says 115 long foot, eight inch stockade fence, which would go from the corner of the Bell property, along my property on the residential side, out to Jersey.
Then if it's like this?
That is, that is correct. Our plans do reflect a, like, a privacy fence, but a stockade fence along the residential properties in the back, but chain link around, along the commercial properties on the side. So that's on the plans. That's why I spoke about a privacy fence earlier, is because that's already on our plans.
So the residents' backyards, they won't be looking at a chain link? They'll be having a solid privacy?
Sorry, on the plans, correct.
Does that satisfy your concern there?
I don't understand why we're changing it from.
He's not.
It's, it's going to stop. So basically, you're doing solid stockade fence. You get to this corner of my property, he's putting in a chain link fence, and then he's going to take the stockade solid fence on Jersey's side.
Could you point it out on the plan, sir?
Right here. So we're going, pardon, we're going from this corner here to the street, which would be the end of my gray zone, which is stockade. We're going from here to here, which is the street line side, where everybody gets access to. He's trying to add it to a chain link fence. There's a chain link fence here. And then we're going back into a stockade on the back end of this fence, right here. So it's stockade, chain link, back into stockade. Whereas it should be stockade from here to here, to give us solid, you know. It's supposed to be solid, for the curving.
Yeah, we hear you now.
It's supposed to be solid, by route, from what I recall. So that's a solid. I want to make sure we get.
So the original design and intent was to provide privacy fence, stockade fences on those, those properties that are but by residential. Where it switched to a roadway or a right of way, we went back to chain link. And again, on the commercial, we have chain link. We do have to make some minor modifications based upon the comments of the township engineer's letter. We'll put a stockade fence along the right of way there to assist the residents. So it'll be, it'll be a stockade fence from corner of commercial to corner of commercial the entire way. We'll make sure that that change is incorporated.
Thank you, sir.
John, do we want to see a revised plan?
We're going to have a pre-recorded plan prior to recording. So there, there's, you know, a couple of outstanding comments that have to be addressed. So that can be addressed at that time.
So we, you have the opinion we can pass this this evening. There are certain conditions which have to be discussed. One, that letter F, that's nothing easy, that's easy. There's no fee and lieu for the vegetation. There's going to be a deferral in regards to.
Sidewalks.
Streets, sidewalks and curbs. There's going to be a deferral. And we're also going to require that the fence be a stockade fence along that just described area. So, so the motion, if we are disposed to grant it, would be to approve the resolution that, which I prepare pertaining to 235 Andrews Road, tax map parcel number 2102317-16 relating to an application of Sebastian B I R L A N, L A D E A N U for preliminary final plan development as set forth in the resolution, subject to the modifications, which I just mentioned. That being said, I'll prepare a revised resolution, a revised resolution with these conditions, which we'll vote upon next, our next meeting. So that is the revised resolution. So the motion is to approve it, as I just said, and I'll prepare a revised resolution, which will get signed at the next meeting.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Are there any questions to the clarity of that? I understand what he's saying. Okay, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Solicitor, 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And residents, if you ever have questions during construction, please come back. Please talk to us. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item. Consider appointment to Play Wiki Farm Foundation. Mr. Gatto, who would handle that? You or?
If you have a name, somebody make a motion.
Okay, there were two recommendations to replace one of the individuals that left the Play Wiki Farm Foundation. There was a Michael Babcock, and there was an Andrew Napoli. So would anyone like to make a proposal for which one?
I will make a proposal to appoint Michael Babcock to the Play Wiki Farm, excuse me, Play Wiki, all righty. Play Wiki Farm Foundation for a term ending December 31st, 2024.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
There is.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion needed? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Congratulations, Mr. Babcock. And Mr. Napoli, thank you. Thank you for offering your name. Agenda item number five. Consider the appointment to the library board. As far as I know, we have one recommendation, and that person is Ms. Stephanie Sides. So anyone from the library that would like to make any comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to appoint Stephanie Sides to the library board for a term ending on December 31st, 2026? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Okay, we're going to give you an update on a considered possible settlement of the 2021 roadway program. Our solicitor, Mr. Tracy Hunt, if you could address that topic, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Castle. So this proposed settlement deals with the Township's 2021 roadway project, and a number of the roads that were part of that roadway project that had some issues with them after the paving had occurred. This was a mill and overlay project, so those roads were completely stripped down and repaved. Sometime after that, there were some issues with glass coming out of a number of the roadways. As a result of that, the township engaged in some discussions with the contractor to remedy this. These discussions have gone on and have been protracted. They've been over two years of discussions back and forth with no progress. As we were getting closer and closer to litigation ensuing from this, and the township calling on the maintenance bond that they, that the contractor had to post, we were able to start reaching some consensus on a, on a way to settle this. And so that's what we have for the board's consideration tonight, is a proposed settlement with the contractor with these, with regards to 11 roads. What we've agreed to in principle with the contractor, and the contractor has agreed to do, if the township so votes for it, is to repave or improve 11 roadways. Six of the roads would be, would have mill and overlay done, which is the entire process. They would strip off what is currently there and repave it. Those six roads would be Fox Hollow, Elmwood Avenue, Woodbine Avenue, Henry Avenue, Richard Lane, and Herschel Avenue. And this would be the same mill and overlay work that was done, you know, three years ago. So the same length of roadway with those six roads. For the other five roads that were in dispute between the township and the contractor, dealing with the township's engineers and with, upon advice from the township engineers, five of those roads, they can be remedied with what is known as a slurry sill application, a type two slurry sill. So it was agreed by the contractor to outsource a contractor that specializes in this type of application to come in, and this would be put on Valley Stream Circle, Hazel Avenue, Second Street, Forest Avenue, and Rosewood Avenue. The idea there is, based on the engineer's input, is that the slurry sill application will seal in any glass that may have been, or may protrude at some point in the future. It's going to seal it in. It'll be a great, you know, resolution to the problems with that road. And then the other six, as I said, would be complete mill and overlay. The contractor has agreed to do this in the proposed settlement. They will issue a maintenance bond for those six roads, similar to the, what they had issued in 2021. So therefore, if there's any issues with these roads for the next year, those six roads, before that bond expires a year from now, the township would be able to once again enforce, enforce the maintenance and the improvement of those roads. As for the five roads that would be getting slurry sill, part of the proposed settlement would be that that would also come with a three-year warranty from the contractor that applies it. So if there's issues with that application, or for some reason, glass is coming up through those five roads, there's a three-year warranty on that. Aside from that, the work would, the contractor has agreed to get the work done this year. So as part of the proposed settlement, the deadline to get the work done for all 11 roads would be October 31st.
Mr. Hunt, you prepared a proposed settlement agreement, and that's, has been executed by the contractor?
That is correct.
And we're seeking authority for this to be executed tonight from the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how would the motion read then, Mr. Hunt?
Um, it would go, whereas in consideration of the, of the legal and factual issues related to the instant matter, as well as the burden and cost of potential litigation, the township and Earl paving have determined and concluded that it is in the best interest of both parties to settle and agree pursuant to which Earl shall perform and/or contract with a third party to perform, in the case of the slurry sill application, the proposed word, road work as set forth in the settlement agreement.
And authorize the contract to be executed by the township manager?
That is correct.
Okay, so is there a motion on the floor to accept this agreement?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Are there any questions or clarity for this?
I just want to add, I want to thank our staff and our legal professionals for working diligently to bring this issue to a conclusion. I'm glad that the vendor finally realized that they have to abide by the terms of the contract that they signed, and I'm glad that we could reach a point where we can get this done, and so the residents don't have a glass recycling campaign going on on the roads anymore. So I'm thankful to everyone. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Perattano. There's a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Our next agenda item, Mr. Dillon, can you address that, about awarding a bid for the roadway program?
Um, yes, the next, the next item would now be to reject all bids since the matter's been otherwise resolved.
Okay, so what that means is, if we did not have an agreement, then we would have to bid this out. So is there a motion to reject all bids?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion, a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0.
See you, Tracy.
Okay, Valley of Fear. We have a parking agreement with the proprietor down there, and Mr.
Well, just briefly, there's, the rate was 500,000 last year. Walt's worked with, with, what's his name? Tom Eggle. It's this year, the fee's going to be 600, 1,200. There's going to be traffic controls. There's going to be proof of insurance and a payment date. So we're asking your approval of that proposal.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve the 2024 agreement?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions? We talked about this in our work session, folks. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Our next agenda item, number nine. Consider authorizing the advertisement for the reconstruction of the courts at the Dauphin Municipal Park. Mr. Mulholland?
Thank you, Board Vice Chair. We are looking for permission to, for, or to out the bid for the court reconstruction project at Dauphin. This would involve taking the six tennis courts and turning it into four tennis and six pickleball, as well as redoing the basketball courts to have basketball and volleyball lines on the sport court type. Straps to others' pickers and their packets of the, the project for the courts.
Okay, let's not go out for a state bid or?
Yeah, John can explain that process a lot.
Or something like that?
Public bid, yeah, it's on pending.
Good, okay. Is there a motion to authorize the advertisement for the reconstruction of the courts at Dauphin Municipal Park?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. Is there any further questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
How much money is available to do this work?
That's a good question. Mr. Gatto or Mr. Ryan, can you address that? Or Mr. Mulholland?
Either one.
Well, let's say it this way. It all depends on where the bids come in at. That's one. Two is the fact that we have reserves left over from when we did the, the field lighting. There's approximately, slightly in between 300,000 to 400,000 set aside that we could put through there. Additionally, we have other bond monies that we could make, to make it happen. We just may have to come back to the board and get their approval with regard to that one particular line item in the, in the bond document.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this a project where we can try to find grants for?
Absolutely. If that's the, if that's the way you want to go, we should hold off on going out to bid. If you want to try to obtain grants, because once you put this, this process in motion, that you limit your pool of grants that you can get. So if we go out to bid and get, receive, receive bids, and you're ready to go construction, that either you have to wait to start construction before to get a grant, or that you're, you're, the pool of grants are, you know, they're reduced because you're already at a point to get those, to get the money.
What type of timeline do you have in mind for this project to come to, excuse me, be completed?
So if we went out to bid in the next week or so, we would open in September. Depending on the weather and how the contractors work, we could potentially start in October and be done before the winter comes. Or that we could potentially have it start the first thing in the spring to be ready to go.
We also could reject any bid that we get if it's not coming in at the right number.
That is correct.
I'd like to see the process started. We've been dragging our feet with this, and residents are complaining to me, you know, they're going to different, you know, Middletown Township or Ben Sel and they'll play pickleball. And, you know, we have a target number that we're looking at, and if it comes in, you know, less than that, and we could swing it, then maybe we could do it. If not, then we do the grant route. We have a grant in for the walking path, right?
That is correct.
And when will we hear from that? Is that a six?
Sometime in the fall. We actually heard from the, the D C E D and C F A that administrates that grant. They were asking for, they asked some questions, which is a good sign, that they're considering our application. I would anticipate that sometime in the middle to late fall.
Good. Okay, I, I would just say that going out to bid doesn't mean we're going to do it. I'd like to try to get the ball rolling.
I just want to know if we had the money and if it was, you know, budgeted and.
Right.
500,000 is a little much, but long you had it.
So there's a motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next order of business. Consider authorization of the advertisement for the reconstruction of the courts. I'm sorry. Consider authorizing, I don't have my bifocals. Consider authorizing the township manager to sign the Hanson Brothers Contracting Stormwater Management Agreement.
So this is for a single-family lot that's going to be rebuilt. As part of that, they have an underground infiltration system to control stormwater management. As part of your stormwater management ordinances, the applicant is required to record a stormwater management agreement. It has been prepared by the township solicitor and agreed to by the applicant and to authorize it to go to get recorded. That's what we're requesting.
And it's reviewed by John, since I have no idea what he's talking about when it comes to stormwater.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize the township manager to sign the Hanson Brothers Contracting Stormwater Agreement for 512 from Wood Avenue in Feasterville?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions?
Yeah, just real quick. I just noticed, you know, we talked about this during the work session. And just reviewing the agreement, I know that there's a provision for the maintenance of the facility. A gentleman spoke, you know, during the Andrews Road project about maintenance that he says is never being done on that one facility in that project. What mechanisms do we have in place to make sure they're performing the maintenance when they should?
So that's essentially why this agreement's being recorded. For Andrews Road, there's actually an additional step. It's called MPDS permit. If it's over an acre disturbance, it gets recorded. And there's actually a plan that shows all the maintenance notes and all the stormwater management. And that gets recorded. And there is, you know, specific things that need to be done. And then the authority, the township has the authority to enter those projects and do maintenance themselves. And if the property owner doesn't do it, that township can do that maintenance and then charge the property owner. So this agreement that's in front of you right now is the same sort of thing, it's just only for a single-family lot.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Our next item. Consider approval of the change order for the township building roof replacement project, which has been completed.
990, John.
Mr. Everett?
Thank you. So the change order in front of you is for $990. And this is due to the fact that the contractor had to replace more roof sheeting than was anticipated. It was impossible for us to estimate a correct number without taking the shingles off. So we estimated 10. We got a unit quantity, ultimately 27 sheets of our plywood to be replaced. So we had an over on of $990.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the change order of $990 authorizing the township manager to sign the documents?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. And item number 12. Now we have to pay for the roof. Consider authorizing the first payment for the township building roof replacement project. Mr. Everett, just touch on that quickly.
So this is the first and final pay estimate. We are holding 2% retention. We have a year maintenance bond on the roof. We are requesting payment to the contractor, Beaver Home Improvements, for $123,274.20.
Okay, and the 990 is on top of that?
That number includes the change order.
Okay, very good. So why did we need number 11?
Just the process. It's a procedure. We're trying to make it correct.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize a first payment of $123,274.20 to Beaver Home Improvements?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. And that takes us to Mr. Gatto for a manager report.
Thank you, Board Vice Chair. Real quick. The township actually has some vehicles and equipment that's going up on municipal bid. I believe it's 16 items in total. The starting for that bid commences on 8/15, I'm sorry, basically tomorrow, for 8:30 a.m. and closes on 8:30 August 30th at 4:30 p.m. Second, again, we have a blood drive. There is a blood drive that's coming up. I believe it is, if I can see, my eyes are failing me right now, August 28th, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Sarah Mitchell Community Center. Basically, if you attend this event, every donor gets a T-shirt as well as a $20 Amazon gift card. You could call 1-800-RED-CROSS or you could visit the website, redcrossblood.org, and you would enter L Township to schedule an appointment. You have to schedule the appointment. But again, you will be getting a T-shirt as well as an Amazon gift card for $20. And that again is for August 28th at the Sarah Mitchell Center from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Lastly, coming up, we have the Community Day. You want to discuss that real quick?
Sure. So we have our Community First Responders Appreciation Day on Sunday, September 22nd, from 12 to 4 at RENT. We have family activities, free activities, car show, moon bounce houses, motorcycle rally, dunk tanks, and more.
That's all I have, Board Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, sir. Supervisor's comments. Mr. Ottinger, you can take 15 minutes.
Thank you. We're going to need it. Nice Chiefs event last night, National Light Out. Thanks, Chief. Nick, thanks for working behind the scenes during Act 172. And I was wondering if we could get like some kind of halfway report, halfway through the year, report of this new fire inspection program to see where we are.
Absolutely, sir.
Can you give me numbers for the first meeting in September?
All right, great. I would add, have a nice night. Not 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Mr. Peritano?
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank all the public for coming out and those watching at home. We do appreciate your participation. I want to congratulate our newest addition to our police force, Officer Jessica Vogonitz. I got it right? Yeah, okay. Congratulations, and we look forward to great things from you. I want to thank again all the staff and everybody. Remind the public, unfortunately, summer's end is approaching, even though none of us want to see it happen. It's starting to get darker outside at night already. Just remember, you know, school does start last, I believe it's the last week in August, school starts. Remember, those kids and buses will be on the road. And everybody enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peritano, and I'll be quick. Thank you for the residents that are here tonight and those that are watching from home. We appreciate your interest in your community, and we're here to serve you. I want to congratulate Mr. Vogonitz. In 1991, I stood before this Board of Supervisors and was sworn in as a police officer. And that oath of office means a lot. And I appreciate what our judge, Judge Baranowski, has, the career path that he took, the abuse that he took as an undercover officer. And he has certainly risen to the top. Please sign up for the township emails. You get one email a week, and I always look forward to that. Be sure to follow up on the township webpage for our Parks and Recreation Fall Programs. There are programs lined up all the time. And I'm sure we might be hearing something about our Halloween decorating and our Christmas decorating, so look forward to that. Travis Mannion Run will be on September 14th at Russell Elliott Memorial Park. Please put that on your calendar and your phone if you know how to do that. I'm just learning. Our next meeting will be September 11th. And I hope to have some patriotic event that night when we start. And hearing that, is there a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you, folks.